Stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Lewis and Clark County Commission. It's Thursday, February 6, 2025, 9 o'clock in the morning. I'm Tom Rolfe. I'm the vice chairman of the commission and I'm sitting in for the commission chair, Candace Payne, who's unable to be here today. To my left is Brandy Spangler, who is keeping track of our minutes and getting everything posted for the public input as efficiently as possible. To my right is Commissioner Andy Hunthausen and to his right Nico Hash, our representative from the county attorney's office, and to his right Roger Baltz, our chief administrative officer. The first, I would like to ask everyone to please sign in at the register on the, by the bar and if you would just leave your contact information so that we can, should we need to contact you after the meeting, we can. And for those that are online, and we hope there's a lot of people, there sometimes are, we encourage you to come down and visit us in person sometime. We're going to start off with a little different agenda today. The, we have no consent action items. We're going to have an election officials' update. So several of the elected officials here in the county are here to give us an update on what's going on there. And we find it to be a very good opportunity to work together and understand each other's needs. And since the county commission oversees the financial part of each office, it's important that we have that communication. Is anybody that would like to start off first? We've got, we have with us Justice Court Judge Mark Piskulich. Push and get the green button.
There we go. All right.
There we go. And we can get it all recorded.
All right. Well, Chairman, Commissioner, thank you again, Mark Piskulich with the Justice Courts. Just to let you know, Judge Swingley, I think, wanted to be here as well. He has a jury trial going today, so he had a scheduling conflict. I brought up a couple of numbers just to overview like what's gone through the courts in the last year. Mentioned a couple of other things that have been happening and then happy to answer any questions anybody might have. So I, we printed off these, it's all of the cases by year and just for, so from 2023, all of the filings in the Justice Courts, both courts were 6,246 filings in 2023. That's about 1,360 civil, 3,700 tickets, which are TKs, traffic citation, basically. And then like 72 small claims and 1,000 CRs. And CRs are criminal actions which are going to be felonies, which wind up upstairs in the district courts. In 2024, we had an up, a little upswing of civil filings from 1,300 to 1,759, a slight drop of small claims from 72 down to 66 small claims. Interestingly, the TKs went from 3,700 to 28. So there's almost, almost a full 1,000 citation drop off. I don't, anything, any explanation I'd have would be purely anecdotal. I think there's, you know, we can only see the citations that are issued by law enforcement. So there's been a little drop off in citations and hopefully that means everybody's driving well and has their licenses, insurance and everything they need. And then the criminal actions went down from 1,013 to 940. So that's pretty close in, in numbers. For, one of the things I'm really proud of that's going on down in the Justice Courts is we've got, and I think I've mentioned this the last couple of times I've been in front of the commission, but we've got the career ladder for our clerks pretty well in place now. And we, right before I was sworn in again a couple of weeks, a month ago, Tom Bremer was promoted to my lead clerk in the second Justice Court. So we, and we have again, a good structure for clerk one, clerk two, clerk three, and a career ladder for the Justice Court clerks. I think it's, is all I could ask from the commission in the county. And I think it's, I wish I could give them more. But I still don't know that the job is properly rewarded for what I see they have to do, but it is what it is. And I think we've done, I really appreciate what the county's done. I think we've done really well by them. So I'm happy about that. On a personal and professional note, I was accepted this summer to what's called the Montana Justice Institute, which is a grant that is funding 20 of the lower court judges, courts of limited jurisdiction in the state. 20 of us get to go to the University of Montana Law School for two weeks in June for training specifically from the law professors regarding courts of limited jurisdiction, like very specific issues that address the limited courts, traffic, DUI, things like that, civil procedures, evidence procedures, all through the law school. So I'm excited I get to do that. I'm looking forward to that. And then I think the only other thing I would mention before I open up for questions is on this coming Valentine's Day, the 14th, myself and Judge Swingley and Judge Peterson are again doing the food for fines. And we'll have places set up at Super One, at Vans, and at the courthouse for people to bring in food and exchange it towards fines they might owe the courts, clear off some of the fines, certainly clear up any kind of warrants or things that are out there and get some food for the Helena Food Bank. I don't really know that I'd have much else to offer as far as how things are going, what else we've been doing. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
If, tell me a little bit more about this opportunity for, for people to bring in food.
Sure. Yeah. So we just, we accept food items and for up to credit for $100, up to $100 off your fines. And it's not necessarily $100 worth of food. Like if you bring in, there's so much per can. So if you bring in some canned goods, and it's of course food that has to be non-perishable so it can go to the Helena Food Chair. And we'll set up some tables in those stores and we got it advertised and we're letting our people know they're coming in, paying fines now. And you can kind of get a little bit of a more bang for the buck and also some donating, some stuff to the food chair. It of course doesn't work towards restitution, any of those kinds of financial obligations, because that's where, that's money that's being distributed to a victim, but money that's just being collected for fines, we can sometimes give some people's credit, help them get back on their feet. It's one of the tougher things, you know, that faces most of the people that wind up in front of us is getting all, one more financial obligation taken care of. So we did it last year at Vans and Safeway. And again, we have a, we'll have a table set up at the courthouse so you, they can bring, you can bring food right up to the courthouse and get some credit towards fines there, make a payment that way.
And when is that going to be?
That's going to be February 14th on Valentine's Day.
All right. All right. Commissioner, do you have any other questions or?
I'm just wondering, Commissioner, if you're going to take advantage of the opportunity.
All my fines are much higher than that.
It's the warrants we need to worry about with you, Commissioner.
No, I do have a comment if I could. I just, this whole exercise for me is special in the sense that I think just giving us an opportunity to get together, you know, with our fellow elected officials. We, we don't do it that often. The public doesn't have the opportunity to hear all of you like they do us on a regular basis. They get pretty tired of us, I'm pretty sure. But it's also something that relationally, it's important, I think, for us to get together. It's also important for the public to be able to hear from their elected officials. So it's just an opportunity and I'm really grateful. None of you have to be here and just, we're going to continue to do the invite every quarter and those that want to come and be able to kind of share what's going on in their world, really appreciate it. And then beyond that, I wanted to thank you and, and County Attorney Downs specifically for your work on the jail reduction task force, if that's the right.
Jail population.
Jail population task force, yeah. And, you know.
Always a work in progress.
It is a work in progress, but it is, it is just that. It's, it's work and people coming together, trying to, trying to figure out a way to work on the population in the detention center. And not, I don't, I would guess, I'm pretty sure, pretty confident saying this, that not all communities are doing that. And you read in the paper sometimes about other communities at odds with maybe Department of Corrections or, you know, each other, or the county attorney with the, you know, the, the public defender's office or whatever it might be. And in our case, we're all in the same room. We're trying to work together and it's very positive. And I just appreciate that. I appreciate people coming to the table and, and I'm grateful that we have the kind of relationships where we can at least come and talk. We may not always agree. We may not always have huge solutions. And sometimes we might have a meeting where we feel like, well, that was an hour wasted. But that's not usually the case.
No, it's not.
And, no, and we usually have, we're working in, rowing in the same direction. So I just really appreciate that and I appreciate you being here. And you're, you're chairing that, that task force. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for mentioning that. I, it's one of the things that I thought about and I wasn't sure about mentioning here. There, you know, there are a lot of other parties involved. But yeah, like you said, it's very cooperative and I think productive, especially here in Lewis and Clark County. We've got, it's a, it's a smaller task force of the Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee. I know I've seen both of you commissioners there as well. And the task force is working with, we have the commander of the jail, the district court judge, Mr. Downs, and OPD, the Public Defender's Office, the, there's one member of the Citizens Advisory Council that attends. The, there's two members from the Department of Corrections. There's the sergeant from the probation parole and another member of the Department of Corrections that comes down. And then pretrial services, Kelly McBride and her staff do a great job of gathering and compiling numbers and showing us what we're doing, maybe other places to look. And yeah, I think we're, I think it's a, I don't think, I think it is unique to Lewis and Clark County. And I don't think it's happening everywhere. And I think it does keep everybody at least an opportunity to voice concerns, vent concerns, and point out other areas that we might be looking at. So yeah, it's a great thing.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity, commissioners. Anything, is there any other questions? I don't know if, do questions actually come in while you're in meetings through the?
No.
Okay.
In person.
Well, you know where to find me. If there's, I think Judge Swingley may come. I actually had my calendar cleared today. I was slated to cover a jury trial in Powell County for Judge Gallagher, but that cleared up and let out. So I was, I was free today. So I think Judge Swingley might try to make it to one of your later meetings. And I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for coming. And again, I want to echo what Commissioner Hunthausen has said, that it's really good to be able to sit down and to hear a little bit about what's going on in your shop and, and talk about things where we can work together to make the whole county government work better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Lisa Calio, our clerk of the court, recently elected, but you've been in the office a long time.
I have been in the office, oh, commissioners, thank you for having me. I have been in the office for 24 years, recently elected. And I'm not going to go into cases yet, but we have a lot of change. Being recently elected, we have the snowball effect of changing of personnel and promoting from within. And I was lucky enough to have the opportunity to, prior to Angie actually retiring and leaving the office, hiring and promoting four people with their start date effective after she leaves, so that it would alleviate the hiring when I didn't have her still as staff. So I was able to promote four people and that left two vacant spots at the entry level and I hired one of those. I have one vacant position left. And that's pretty much what's going on now is training all the new people in their new positions as well as learning my new position. And that's all that's going on, really.
For the, for the public's information, you serve, you, you serve with the, the district courts and the justice courts?
Nope, no justice court.
Okay, just the district courts?
Yes, we have four district court judges and one standing master that we work with and keep their records and schedule their hearings and bailiff their court cases.
Okay, all right, all right. Any, any questions or any comments?
Mr. Chair, maybe just along those same lines. Thank you for being here, first of all. Really appreciate it. But that is one thing that many people who might watch this or may not know all the things that you do. So servicing or being there, being, being there for the courts, that encompasses a lot of things. But you do a lot of other things in the office as well. So maybe just a kind of rundown of what happens in your office.
So in our office, we file about an average of 5,500 cases a year. Those rank criminal, domestic relations, civil, dependent neglects, involuntary commitments. We issue marriage licenses. We have adoptions. There's many different types of cases. All statutory liens come through our office. So if you're looking for your tax liens, we have them. We, like I said, we have four district court judges. We have a courtroom clerk that schedules all their hearings, bailiffs all their jury trials. We have a lot of jury trials every year. Can't, don't have numbers right now. Average of sometimes two to three scheduled a week. They don't all go, but the calling of the jury and then the calling off of juries takes a lot of time. We have one person dedicated to doing that. It's a full-time job. I'm not sure what else. Sorry. I'm new at this. Ask all the questions in the world. I'm happy to answer them.
Oh, you're great. I just wanted people to get a sense of, Mr. Chair, people to get a sense of all the things happening. There's just many, many things, very busy. And you have, how many staff of?
16, including myself. And we are down one, which I hope to fill by the end of this month or the beginning of next month.
And included in the district court work that you do, you work, you also help with the standing masters, right?
Yes, we have a clerk that schedules for the standing master. She gets assigned cases from our judges, which frees them up to do more things like jury trials or big cases. She gets the cases that are, she's qualified to hear from all the different judges.
All right.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you again for, for coming and appreciate the, the good work that you do. And probably your office might be one that, that meets as many people through the jury system than, as anyone, anyone we have.
Oh, yes. We have each year 10,000 jurors that we call. And they're not all called at once, but then when we have a trial, three weeks prior to it, we send out the number that the judges think they need for their trial. And then we're responsible for taking requests for excusals, getting the notices out to the attorneys on who their jurors are, making sure that the juries, jurors are qualified to serve as jurors. Yeah, we meet a lot of jurors. Right now, Justice Court is having a jury trial and ours just ended yesterday. So it was good timing. Parking is awful when you have three in a week.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming over and hope that the public has, yeah, got a little information that they didn't have before.
Well, they're welcome to come in and ask any questions.
Okay.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Our county attorney is here. Kevin Downs, come on forward.
Morning, Vice Chair, Commissioner Hunthausen. I'll reiterate the thank you for having us come in today and just give a, some brief overview of how our office is handling the work that we do. And, and of course, in anticipation of, we'll be back here with the budget season coming up. So, so our office has a little bit less than 30 people in it. About half of them are attorneys, the other half are non-attorneys. And I can't stress enough the, the variety of issues that come through our office and the things that we're dealing with on a daily basis. Okay. It's a huge volume. And I think there's overlap, as the, as you are aware, with the justice of the peace, with Judge Piskulich and Judge Swingley, of course, with Ms. Calio and her office, the clerk of court, Ms. Reeves, who we hear from every county department, we have a little bit of overlap with. So I just, there's, we have a significant number of contacts with the public on a daily basis. And that could be members of the community just because of cases, witnesses, jurors that are called to certain cases, law enforcement agencies we're dealing with on a daily basis, the Montana Highway Patrol, the Helena Police Department, the Lewis and Clark County Sheriff's Office, the East Helena Police Department, and then surrounding sheriff's offices in Broadwater County, Jefferson County, Cascade County. And that's every single day. So we have a lot of contact with, with members of the public. We work, of course, with our county departments and other local and state agencies because of the issues that come through our door. And that's either whether it's the civil context or the criminal context. And of course, we're, we're in court. So if Judge Piskulich is there, somebody from my office is usually there on behalf of the state. So all the numbers that Ms. Calio just referenced and then Judge Piskulich, all the, primarily all the criminal cases are through our office, not all of them, but most of them. So there's a huge volume. And as the commissioners are aware, we also have a complex civil department in the extent of the issues that come through there. Obviously, Mr. Hash, who's here today, Mr. Shea, you see them pretty regularly and you understand the issues that they're dealing with on a daily basis. So I just can't stress enough the, the number of issues that our, that our staff is dealing with on, on a daily basis. Some simple, some complex, and sort of everything in between. Challenges continue to be just the volume. Some of it's unpredictable. We can't predict how many alleged offenses may happen this year. We can sort of gauge based upon the last couple of years. So there's a fluctuation there. So we don't know what that volume might look like. We obviously have challenges that overlap with civil and criminal issues with mental health. I think the commissioners are well aware of, of the mental health challenges for some people in our community, also substance abuse. And, and that's, that's a challenge that, that overlaps with criminal cases and of course, in the civil context. As far as staffing goes, right currently, we are down one attorney. So we're, we've, I have to thank Human Resources, Carrie and her staff for all the work that we've, I keep telling them they're going to get tired of me calling for help with HR work, but we just really appreciate, because we can't do our, we can't get people hired unless we work with them. So, so I really appreciate. We worked a large part with Emily McGlynn and they're just great. They, they answer our questions and they help us facilitate. We, so we have one attorney position that's open in the criminal realm, and then we have one legal assistant position. So we're almost fully staffed. I think that's everyone's goal. There's always a fluctuation, but we're hoping that we'll be at full boat because that's when we can hopefully be as efficient as we can. If we're, when we're not full, then the work falls to other people. I have to give you thanks, like some of the others. The commissioners last year approved a new position in our office, a victim witness coordinator. And so we are able to hire someone who was in a different position. Her name is Trudy Jones. So she's started that position last fall. And I thanked you then, and I, I think I've mentioned thanks along the way, but I just can't stress enough how much that's helped. So just for example, last year, or excuse me, last week, we had a, a trial of, it was a homicide. A woman was shot in the city limits over by, off of Prospect. And so it was a very intense trial to the extent that it was, you know, someone, someone's life was lost. And there was about 25 witnesses that the state had to call to prove the case to the jury or to essentially present the case. And Trudy facilitated all those people showing up. And that included family members, that included law enforcement, that included people coming in from out of state because people move as time goes. So because of her position, we were able to, to have that contact, to have that facilitation and present what was, you know, a terrible case, but, you know, on behalf of the victims. So that happens every day. We had a trial this week on Monday. It was another felony case in front of a district court judge. Very troubling circumstances. And that requires victim witness coordinators. So now we have two. We've had one for years and years and now we have two. And I can't tell you how much we appreciate that. So and another thanks to, to the commissioners is, I know there was a pay bump for a number of positions in the county that happened within the last couple of weeks. So I, I thank you so much for doing that. I think that at least a little bit of a bump, you know, gives some people appreciation who have been here a long time. So on behalf of this, my staff that was impacted, thank you very much for, for that. And then the, the legislature's going on, I know the commissioners are well aware of that. I'm a member of the Montana County Attorneys Association Board. So there's obviously 56 counties in Montana and we have a board of, I think we're about eight county attorneys. So I'm fortunate to be on that board. And so we have, you know, we're constantly seeing what legislation might impact our work. So there's, every day there's usually a hearing that will somehow influence our work, whether it could be positive or negative. So we're constantly looking at that. So we've had, I've been up to the legislature. We've had some other members that have been up there to testify, either, you know, for or against a certain measure. So we're just being careful how that might impact our work here in Lewis and Clark County because those issues are important. So that's sort of a general overview. Happy to answer any questions. And I, I just heard a guy give a speech yesterday that it was kind of an old, it was an NBA analyst named Ernie Johnson. He was talking, I don't know if you guys are familiar with him. And he talked about, yeah, it's, it's a get to job as opposed to got to. So I kind of like to think about that. We, this is a job we get to as opposed to we got to. So I feel fortunate that this is, this is a position I get to do. So I just, so thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank, thank you for the, the update. Thanks for explaining things for the public. And, and we appreciate being able to coordinate with you. And, and like the other elected officials, we, we appreciate being able to work and share our HR department and our finance department to help in all those matters as well. Commissioner, do you have any other thoughts or questions?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I'm with you on the get to, you and Ernie, the get to versus got to. That's great. Really grateful to be sitting here as well and grateful for your work and the service. I do have, you know, a couple of things I want to talk to you about. You know, there's a couple of guys that we have some real trouble with, you know, Mr. Hash and Mr. Shea. No, we really appreciate them. They are amazing help to us. And as you've been saying, the workload is, is huge. And I can only look from the outside and, and understand from, from hearing the comments about the workload on the criminal side, but I watch it with these guys and, and all of the departments and how they're served by them. And I've only heard appreciation for the work that they do. And people rely on them greatly every day, multiple times a day for their counsel and, and good help. So just really appreciate them being here and they, you know, I want you to make sure they stay.
Okay.
Don't be pulling them away.
Thank you.
Anywhere. Mr. Hash is, you know, you can't staple him to his chair here. No, we really appreciate and the work that you do. Thank you. And thank you for being here. Again, you don't have to be. And all of the elected officials coming together and, and being available to the public and to hear a little bit what they do. I think for the most part, folks don't understand fully what happens in the different offices and, and the day-to-day work that we do. So just a glimpse behind the curtain is really positive and good. And I think keeping our relationship in a conversational and working dialogue is important. So thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I would like to echo Commissioner Hunthausen's comments about appreciating the, the legal support you give us here. I don't know how many times they've, they've helped me from running off the rails and, and getting things done. And I, because they very kindly remind me that there is law there that, that we can't, we have to, have to, have to comply with. And I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have, we have one more elected official here to represent, to talk with us. That's Amy Reeves. She is our elected county treasurer and clerk in recorder.
Good morning, Commissioner, and Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hunthausen. How are you today? Today I wanted to report on my departments. I have five. So I'll just start with our, oops, I'll just start with our elections department. I have five, so I'll just start with our, oops, I'll just start with our elections department. This year, we had candidate filings start in December. We have four elections so far this year that it looks like we'll be doing. And in between those times, our staff is maintaining the voter information, contacting the voters through required mailings to make sure they're still wanting to be on our active voter list. And we are going to be bringing in about 20 to 30 temps or election judges at the beginning phases of each of our elections. They'll be with us a few weeks. And then after that, the ending part of our election cycle, we'll be bringing in about 60 to 70 total employees or temps, election judges to help us with those election processes. So parking is always a challenge for finding enough room for all that staff in our building here. Our records department is currently in the final stages of their records preservation project, and that is digitizing our books that are dated back into the 1800s. We're also at the point of getting some of those books repaired, just to keep up that record preservation and maintain the book itself so that it's not falling apart. Our accounting department is, has just wrapped up their audit for their last fiscal year that ended June 30th of 2024. They are currently in the phases of migrating to a new financial software. They've been working on that for roughly about a year. With that, we've had to change our banking for all our entities. We have all the school districts and fire districts and water and cemetery and everything flowing through the county treasurer's office and our finance system. So there's been changes to our banking. We are changing our tax system, all our account structures are changing, so we have to update that. The budget module and the payroll module, all of those types of systems are affected with this. So it is a big change and something that we're, our staff is actively working on daily, sometimes at night and possibly weekends, depending on how things flow. So I'd like to definitely give a shout out because that is a lot of work that is happening down there. Our property tax department is doing okay. We have, we brought in four temps this year to help us with our tax bills that were due in this fall. And so we had actually four of our election temps come in, they're already set up on the computer system, so that was great. It was a great help to us. We were able to get the normal tax payments entered in a timely manner, much better than last December or the previous December in 2023. That was a big help. Last 2023, our staff of three were trying to do all that work on their own, and it took them until about December 22nd to get all the tax payments in. This year, we were able to do it by December, or sorry, they were due a month later this year. So we actually were, the sixth of the month, we had everything entered in, except for a few stragglers, which were more complicated that our full-time staff had to take care of. The other thing that we're dealing with is we have a bunch of recalculated or revised bills, they are corrections from Department of Revenue, so staff is currently doing a lot of work on that, getting new bills out to those individuals that were billed incorrectly, had the incorrect values coming over from the Department of Revenue, and they had gone and talked to Department of Revenue or contacted them for those changes. And then soon, the, the property tax department will be working on creating the mobile home and personal property tax bills that will be due this May and September, and then the second half in, in November. The big subject I have to talk about today is our motor vehicle department, because we're experiencing a lot of changes, so I have a lot of information on that. Our motor vehicle department, we are gearing up for a new software system in March, so there's a lot of changes coming on, and we're hoping that with the new system, we'll be able to better serve our customers. And with that, we're also trying to improve some of that other customer service that we have. So we have changed our office hours to 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. We do title work until 4:30 and renewals until 4:45. Our building opens now at 7:30 instead of 7:00 AM, so for those people that are coming to the building, please do not wait outside. From 6:30 or 6:00 on, the building doesn't open until 7:30. So I just want to let people know that, you know, I don't want them out there being in the cold. We are also with the new system and with the changes we're making, we have a check-in window now. It started February 1st, and that allows the customers to come in. They're going to be able to figure out whether they need to be helped by the county or the State of Montana DMV. They'll be able to find out if they need to go to our renewal line, or if they're able to go to a title window to be helped. We'll be able to direct them, we'll issue them a ticket, and then hopefully, we'll have enough staff to be able to review their paperwork before they actually wait in line or wait for their number to be called. So that will hopefully decrease the wait time that our customers will be experiencing and give them a, a better handle of being able to visit our office with a better experience. And the other changes that we're going to be seeing is currently, we are on State of Montana's computer systems and their email systems. So we will be updating our website as county emails get created for those individuals that are in our staff in that department. And our staff, even though we are migrating to a new system, we are really busy right now because the staff is required to take many training sessions. I think they're on their second group of training sessions, which included, I believe, 85 different modules that each of our employees have to take, and they're about 10 to 20 minutes, depending on the module and the research they have to do with those. So some of our staff are at the windows doing those training sessions while they're not helping customers or while the customer's not in the hallway. And so they're trying to maneuver, helping our citizens and actually taking all the training that's required. And then once that set of training is done, they'll have a third set of training to do before we actually go live. The office will be closed for the State of Montana because there is some computer changeover. They will be getting scanners and new computers, and the computers will then be county equipment versus state equipment in the past. So we will be closed March 12th through the 14th, that is a Wednesday through a Friday. They will be bringing in all of those new hardware that we need, making sure that staff can, you know, passwords are working, and they can sign on and do some tests to make sure that they can print and everything. So hopefully, the following Monday, which is St. Patty's Day or March 17th, hopefully staff will be able to, you know, just transition smoothly into helping those customers. I will say that we will have 56 counties going live on this new system that morning, so I'm not sure how, you know, the system will react with all those new users on there, and I'm sure we'll have a few little bumps here and there, but hopefully, it'll be a smooth transition for our customers and for our staff. We are hoping with the new system, it's a cars system that's provided by the State of Montana, that the intent is the system will be a much faster system than we've had in the past. It will allow our, our staff to be more efficient with their time. They won't be waiting, there's, with the slowness of the system. And it's, it's supposed to be easier to use. Hopefully, it'll be easier to get our staff trained on. We've had a lot of turnover in the past year, and generally speaking, it takes about two months to get them to where they can access the system fully, and then they start their training, and it just, it prolongs us being able to help our customers the way we'd like to be able to help them. So we're hoping with this new system that those types of things, we will speed up those processes and get our staff up and running a lot quicker to where they can assist when they're a new hire. And then I would just like to say that we would like to ask everybody for their patience with the transition to the new system. We have to get everything in our old system first before it can be moved over, and then again, we have people that are training at the same time. So it's a lot of moving parts right now, trying to get everything set up. And then, of course, we'll be scanning all paperwork come March 17th versus staying with the paper copy that we're so used to. So it'll be definitely a little bit of a learning curve for our staff, but we are looking forward to it. And I think that all these changes will be able to help us better serve our citizens. So do you have any questions for me today?
One of the things I was really pleased with was the opening of a, of that check-in window, to help people make sure they have the right paperwork available when they come in to do, to get, to pay their car taxes and, and whatnot. Would you recommend that people check, go, go there first and then make, to make, get all that taken care of?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. We do recommend they go to the check-in desk. When we did put the check-in desk in, we had to take our appointment desk out because of staffing and then just being able to keep six title windows available to our public. So they, the intent is for them to go to that check-in window, make sure they're first, you know, in the right place, make sure that it's us that can help them here at the county level versus the state level, and then make sure that they have all the paperwork or everything that they need with them. I don't, I don't want them sitting here when they don't have everything they need. It'd be much nicer if they can have that information checked first so that their wait isn't as long. And if they wanted to, they could check out our website and see and research those needed documents too, so they don't have to just rely on our check-in window, but that, that opportunity's there for them too.
And, and since it seems like so much of the, of the delay and the confusion that's been in the, in that department has been some problems with that computer system that the state provides for, for vehicle registering, does it look like the new system that they're going to provide, this, that the state will provide, is, is it going to be more opportunity for online work or anything like that?
You know, our goal is to see how it goes when we go live originally. It does look like so far it's going to be a much more user-friendly system, be able to help our, our staff, especially like a new staff who's inexperienced, know which type of paperwork is needed versus them having to either get help from a senior staff member or to be constantly looking into a, a manual. We do get registrations from all over the United States. People are moving into Montana, and every state has a different form of a title or a ownership paper. So each of those types of things have to be researched by our staff, so I'm hoping with the new system that that will help alleviate some of that. That's why our out-of-state titles tend to take a little bit longer. And then in our future, we are hoping to see how the cars program works. It's a internet-based type program, so hopefully, it will give us a little bit more freedom, and we're hoping that maybe, I don't know if it'll happen this summer, but that's kind of our goal. We'll see how the transition goes and staffing, because we, we do have some, we still have some openings. But we are hoping to be able to have a staff member go up to Augusta or Lincoln or maybe a combined, you know, to where it's just once a month or something to try to assist our citizens that are in the outer areas.
And just one other comment on another department that you have, your elections department. I've been very impressed with the way you and your election administrator have, have spent time with people, helping them, helping them to understand the process and working with them to make sure people have a, are comfortable with the, the quality and the accuracy of our election process here. So I think you've done a great job in, in putting right, the right people there and, and incorporating a lot of volunteers that are well-trained.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. We actually are very, very, very pleased with our election supervisor, Connor Fitzpatrick. He's very helpful, he's very good with answering questions, and we are always looking for volunteers to help us. I, I did mention we have like 60 to 70 staff members that we're going to need to, to be able to have for these upcoming four elections this year. But next year, when we're on a even year, it will be a, a much bigger scale, and we will need about 300 to 350 just election judges, along with our normal temporary staff that we bring in. So we are always looking for people to help us with those processes. There is a continuous count currently in law that we are not allowed to quit counting or leave for the day, so we have basically a 24-hour schedule that we're running, so we will need volunteers to help us for morning, afternoon, night, you know, and then again in the AM until basically the building opens at 8:00 or normally would open at 8:00. So we, we are running 24/7 on, on that time, so we are always looking for volunteers to help us get through those, those long hours.
So if there are people who are interested in helping out, they better get a hold of, of your elections office and get trained.
Yes, yes, we would appreciate it. We would appreciate any help from the, from the public for helping us with those processes.
Good. Commissioner, anything else?
Mr. Chair, clerk, recorder, treasurer, a whole bunch of other things, Reeves, thanks for being here. I'm glad I'm not you, I think, is you have a lot under your umbrella, and every, it's interesting because nearly every citizen in the county touches your world one way or another through property tax, elections, motor vehicle, just about everyone, but, and, and appreciate all the questions, I won't repeat anything, but it is a, it's a big deal and a huge lift for this motor vehicle transition. So thanks for that, I'm looking forward to it because it's one of the, one of the areas that's been the most challenging from a staffing perspective and then from a customer service perspective, just the, the antiquated nature of the system, as well as the limits that we have in terms of getting things through timely and the training required to have people proficient on those systems. So you've, you've really been working hard to do the best you can with all that. But one thing I wanted to mention, because it's one of the worlds you didn't talk about, one of your worlds you didn't talk about, is the accounting side of things. And you have an accounting staff that keeps track of every penny that goes through the county and all of our partner groups, school district and others that work on that. And just to point out, I think it's 27 years in a row we've gotten an excellence in governmental accounting award, and it's much due to your staff and along with our finance department. But they do great, great work, Sherry Peets and our newer person.
Jen Gerber.
Jen, Jen, that's right. They do great work, and the, the knowledge they have to have to keep all of that straight is really impressive. So thank you for that, and thanks for being here today. Welcome to comment, I didn't really have a question, I just wanted to mention all that goes through that. I, I think people don't, this is good because people don't really understand how much is happening behind the scenes on, on their behalf, and how challenging it is to just, just property tax season alone and make sure that everything happens properly and in the right order, and somebody knows what they're looking at and why. It's, it's just really challenging, and then you multiply that by all these different sectors that you have, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Commissioner, Commissioner Hunt Houseen, thank you so much. Yes, our, I have about 32 staff members between the five departments, and currently, you know, our accounting department is a key role in keeping the whole county and the other entities in our county, like the school districts and the fire districts and those type of things running. We, we have all of that money, all the deposits and all the expenses that are done through those entities that come through our accounting department and our accounting staff, we have, with the three ladies that are normally dealing with the banking and the informational stuff that is coming in and doing those receipts and all the balancing that is required. We balance to our bank statement daily, we track those revenues, we keep track of all the expenses and make sure everything is taken care of and our taxpayer dollars are protected. So big shout out to our whole staff in the accounting department, and of course, our property tax department and motor vehicle and elections and records. All of our staff members do deal with the public entirely. We have motor vehicle, you know, we see the public come many times a year because of the number, number of vehicles that they have. Our elections department tends to see all of the citizens at one time of the year, each time we have an election, it seems like. And then our property tax, of course, also has a, a relationship with our citizens at one time of the year. So it's, it's amazing when you see the number of transactions or people that we see come through the offices at those certain times of year or all year long in motor vehicle. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for, thanks for being here, and appreciate your good work.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I, it just, it just seems to me that it's, this is a great opportunity, and it's an opportunity for us to talk to the public about how, how complex all of this is and, and how the, the offices of different elected officials are intertwined with the, the offices, you know, the, the administrative offices here in the county, in the county commission. All of that's underneath the, under the direction of our chief administrative officer, Mr. Balts. The, the HR work is, is done here for all of the, all of the different officials of the county. The budgeting and the accounting is all handled. The budgeting and the accounting is all handled, handled here in the county administration. And thank, thanks to Mr. Balts and his wonderful administrative staff that, that coordinates so well with the other elected officials and, and makes all of this happen. Really appreciate it.
Absolutely, Commissioner. I'd agree. And I'd say that our citizens chose wisely and the folks that we have present here today. So thank you all for being here today.
Thank you very much. Well, we'll go on to our, our regular items on the, on the agenda. Our next ad, our next item, number four, is an interlocal agreement between Lewis and Clark County and Broadwater County. Ms. Zachral.
Good morning, Vice Chair Rolf, Commissioner Hunt-Housen. I'm Audra Zachral, Assistant Director of Public Works. Before you this morning is an interlocal agreement between Lewis and Clark County and Broadwater County that defines the terms under which Broadwater County will bring their municipal solid waste for disposal at our county landfill. Back in November, staff responded to a solid waste disposal slash landfill services request for proposal from Broadwater County. Broadwater County determined that the submitted proposal was in the best interest of their residents and moved forward with the agreement now being considered. Under this agreement, Broadwater County will bring a minimum of 4,000 tons of municipal solid waste per year through June 30th of 2028. The agreement will, that's when the agreement will expire. At the current tipping fee, 4,000 tons would mean $96,000 in revenue for the landfill. Increased tonnage and revenue have a positive impact to the tipping fee, benefiting both county and city of Helena residents without a significant impact to the life of the landfill. Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve the interlocal agreement with Broadwater County, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
We, you and I talked a little bit about, about it, and I just wanted to assure the public that, that it is, it, this is additional revenue coming in. It, it, I think we're, we're talking 56, 57,000 tons that we normally do in, put in the landfill from municipal waste as it is, and this would be about a seven or eight percent increase in, in, in the amount, depending on exactly where, how much they bring us.
Vice Chair Rolf, you are correct. We did speak about it in 2024. The landfill took in approximately 52,000 tons total of Class II municipal solid waste in fiscal year 25 now. We're, we're teetering about that same amount. We haven't seen a significant increase in tonnage in the last couple of years. The city of Helena, for perspective, brings in about 40,000 of those 52,000 tons. So for perspective, you're right, that is, it's just kind of a drop in the bucket. It's less than 10% for sure.
Okay. But, but an opportunity to, to take a look at the total operation and, and maybe give us a little extra, extra income to, to be a little more efficient too.
Vice Chair Rolf, correct. We, we're already efficient and, and I think that our tipping fee at the landfill is a good indication of that. If you look at tipping fees across the state, Lewis and Clark County landfill has one of the lowest. And when we look at bringing in extra tonnage, that just further helps with the tipping fee. We, we may be able to look at in the next fiscal year, dropping our tipping fee because we're bringing in a little extra waste. So that, that's why it's a good thing for our residents, because they get to share in that, that savings.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner, any other questions or comments?
Uh, Mr. Chair, thank you, just for public information and, and kind of how this works a little bit. Not every county has a, a landfill, a certified landfill or a permitted landfill, I guess. And that's a challenging effort in itself to have a permitted landfill that is maintained. It's somewhat expensive and those kinds of things. So these partnerships are common and normal and, and Broadwater County, for example, is likely looking for somewhere to take their waste as well as the best deal they can get as well. And so in partnering with us, it gives them that opportunity to, to do right by their, their citizens as well. Many of the, what I'll call smaller counties, less populated counties, don't have their own landfill, and they have to find a place to deposit their waste. And so they're looking to, to create these partnerships with other counties. Is that correct? Maybe just speak to that a little bit, how it works.
Sure. Thank you for that question, Vice Chair, Commissioner. Smaller counties, it is expensive to permit a landfill. We currently have 80 acres permitted. We opened back in the late 90s. I believe when we opened back in the 90s, we were estimated to have 100 years worth of life on that 80 acres. We have another 140 acres available to be permitted to expand. So if you look at the area we have available for landfill services, we probably have close to 300 years of life on the area that we have set aside for landfilling services. So when you look at 4,000 tons and we're using about, you know, 50,000 of that, 50,000 tons a year, the chances that we're ever going to use the full 140 plus 80 acres is probably pretty slim. So I don't, the public doesn't need to be concerned that we're going to run out of room with technology and that kind of thing over the next 289 years, because I believe the current space we have is estimated to last another 89 years on the 80 acres we have permitted. So it does make sense to share those costs of permitting a landfill and having that space available with the smaller communities that neighbor us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, just to comment, when I came on the commission, we were shipping waste from the Augusta area out of the county. And through your efforts and efforts of the, of the Solid Waste Board up in Augusta, they determined we could do it more, more cost-effectively, cheaper for the people in Augusta by bringing it down here to my, to Helena. We're also looking at that, at some options like that as a possibility for Lincoln. So it is benefiting our, our taxpayers for the whole county to, to do it right, to, to be efficient and to do a good job like this.
Correct, Vice Chair. Commissioner, I've been with the county 24 years, and I think for that period of time we've had a private company managing solid waste services for Lincoln and Augusta. And as everybody knows, costs are increasing everywhere, but the landfill is, the county is able to haul waste for our out, outlying areas. We just have never looked into doing that. But now with our current management, it, it's a possibility that we are looking into because we can save money for our residents. So you will see some conversation on that in fiscal year 26 budget meetings.
Great. Well, thanks, thanks for your efficiency. And I just, I wanted to take the opportunity to, to let you know personally what a great job I think you do at, at keeping track of the details for us in the Public Works Department. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that.
Anything else? Then is, are there, is there any public comment? Any public comment on this item? There being none, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the interlocal agreement between Lewis and Clark County and Broadwater County as presented by Ms. Zachral.
Second, is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
Well, there being no further discussion, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of approving the interlocal agreement between Lewis and Clark County and Broadwater County as explained by Ms. Zachral, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Oh, I'd better ask for nays. Any nays? Obviously none. Motion passes two, two to zero. Item number five, amendment number one to sub-recipient, recipient agreement between Lewis and Clark County and the Trinity School District, number four. Ms. McCauley.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Anne McCauley, Director of Grants and Purchasing. Before you is an amendment to a sub-recipient agreement between the county and Trinity School District, number four, which is sometimes referred to as Canyon Creek School, just off of Lincoln Road out there. This is a sub-recipient agreement that we've started quite a while ago, actually. As you'll see in the staff report, this is a project that was to expand the school itself, so the classroom addition, and then also water and sewer upgrades that kind of go along with that expansion. Through the COVID years, the school saw quite an increase in their enrollment, i.e., don't have off the top of my head what their enrollment was 2019 and pre-COVID, but I think it was in the teen numbers, and now they're up to 42 students at that K through five school. There's some direct allocation, American Rescue Plan Act funding that's in this agreement. We had $50,000 approved by this commission to go towards that classroom addition. That work finished in December of 2023. We had $62,000 of our direct allocation for those water and sewer upgrades, and then that was matched to $85,000 from the Montana Department of Natural Resources Conservation's Minimum Allocation Grant. And that's kind of what this amendment is. This is to add those $85,000 of D N R C funding and then extend the agreement through the end of 2025. As I noted, the classroom work is done and the work on the water and sewer upgrades is underway. They have received approval for both the water and the septic upgrades from the Montana Department of Environmental Quality this past fall and recently completed procurement with work to commence as soon as the ground unfreezes and the snow starts coming off. So hopefully this spring, with an intention to have the whole system up and going in time for next school year, beginning in September. That new extended classroom addition, it has beautiful new facilities going to it. It just doesn't have the water and sewer hookups yet, so. As I noted, this amendment will extend the sub-recipient agreement through December 31, 2025, and again adds that minimum allocation funds, which was approved by this commission in, I think, November this last year. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions or comments?
As well explained, thank you. I'm pretty clear, I think, pretty clearly explained to the public as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I just, you know, I just would like to reiterate, I think we've, we've had, you've seen some opportunities to, to use these one-time funds to make a difference here in our county. And certainly they've had, they've had a, a really big increase in, in students up there, making it work for that little school district better by getting these one-time funds and, and that kind of followed the, the, it very much followed the idea that we had that these special, these one-time funds should be used for, for one-time items instead of recurring expenses. And once again, you've done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, it's been a fun project to work on. I'll just personally note, it's quite remarkable, you know, you think about just the number of students, but it's a 125% increase over what they had before. This is one of the oldest schools in Montana. I think it is the oldest school, actually, that's on, still on record. It's no longer a one-school classroom. It's multiple, but it's really neat.
Wonderful, wonderful. Any other questions? Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment on this item? There being, there being none, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve amendment number one to the sub-recipient agreement between Lewis and Clark County and Trinity School District, number four, as presented by Director McCauley.
Second, we have a motion and, and a second? Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I could, just.
Yes, Commissioner.
Another thank you to Carrie Lees, who's out there in Cyberland, and we thank her for her good work on these grants. So, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? There being none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of approving the amendment number one to the sub-recipient agreement between Lewis and Clark County and the Trinity School District, number four, as explained by Ms. McCauley, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes two to zero. Mr. Balts, we have a resolution to take a look at. Could you present that for us?
Thank you, Commissioner Rolf and Commissioner Hunt-Housen. This is item number six on the agenda, and it is Resolution 2025-12, opposing legislation limiting or prohibiting Montana Association of Counties lobbying on behalf of its members. So Commissioners, I'm glad to introduce the topic to you for your discussion. You, the county received an email message from a Commissioner Woods from Liberty County requesting that you consider this resolution. Commissioners, I know you're aware of this, but our working relationship with the Montana Association of Counties has been in place for many years. We, we pay them for property and casualty insurance, which includes some defense services, legal defense services. We pay membership to be a part of that organization as well, but this issue is about their advocating on behalf of counties, and they have done so for us in the past, and it's been something they've done for some time for us. So Commissioners, in the resolution, the therefore language, I'll just read into the record, there are a number of whereas's that go through explaining the Montana Association of Counties' history and what they do around the state of Montana. And the therefore language is, "Therefore, be it resolved by order of Lewis and Clark County Commissioners, they hereby oppose any legislation that limits or prohibits lobbying by the Montana Association of Counties." And again, I'll end the way I started, Commissioners, again, this was sent to you by Commissioner Woods from Liberty County. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Commissioner, do you have any thoughts?
Mr. Chair, I do. First, if I could, Commissioner Woods from Liberty County is the president of Manco, so she is actually the president of our association. That's why the email came from her. But there is an effort at the legislature to, by one or more legislators, to limit the ability of the association, Montana Association of Counties, to speak on behalf of the counties. And just a little bit of background, we meet twice a year for large conferences, the association does, and in the fall, there's a process, much like the legislative process, where there are committees of Health and Human Services, Transportation, Education, whatever it might be, and those committees make recommendations to the entire body of the association about where we might support policies or legislation and so that the, the Association of Counties and all 56 counties or members can move forward together as a body in, in some cases. And what Montana Association of Counties does is they act as our eyes and ears and voice at times as an association at the legislature. That is very typical for League of Cities and Towns, the same thing. Contractors Association, I mean, these aren't now governmental entities, but private organizations do it. There's truckers and hotels and others that have associations, and they're all up there lobbying on behalf of their associations. So it's, from that perspective, it's a normal thing that happens on a regular basis. It's always been the case, since I've been here anyway, that, and I think long before I've been here, that the association can speak on behalf of the counties from the perspective of, these are the priorities that were passed by the association, these are the policies that were passed by the association, and they stick within their, their boundaries of what has been chosen as priorities. So, and then they augment that with lots and lots of commissioners and, well, mainly elected, other elected officials, you saw some today in, in our meeting, but mainly commissioners that come to the Capitol and, and lobby in partnership or side by side with the association. And sometimes there might be an individual county that doesn't agree, and they can surely speak on their own behalf, that kind of thing. But when there is agreement by the 56 counties, the association speaks for us at times, and it's been a normal process. And this resolution just, and, and all the counties are being asked to pass a similar resolution or consider a, a similar resolution. This resolution, in my mind, just says, we agree with the, the process that has been our normal and customary process, and we don't want the legislature to prohibit us from... from allowing our association to speak on behalf of the 56 counties. So I'll support the resolution, Mr. Chair.
I have to agree with you entirely. I.
Mark that down.
Yeah. Well, I really believe that government closest to the people is the government that serves the people the best. You know, and so many times people in the legislatures and the federal Congress institute mandates on local government without providing any way to perform those mandates through, through funding. And this is one of those things that, that may is penny whines but pound foolish. And a perfect example are the requirements in our, from our health department to inspect establishments related to food and to, and to health. And, and yet, in order to do those, they have unwisely put fee limits on doing that so that we wind up having to take, take extra money out of our, out of our state, our county budget to subsidize a mandate that they've demanded of us. And so the, it's very important that counties be able to go to the legislature and/or to the federal government and, and express what's really happening at the local level. So I absolutely believe this is the right thing, thing to do, and we'll support it as well. Any other comments, questions? The, is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? There being none, can we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve Resolution 2025-12, as presented by Mr. Balts.
Second, is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
All right, we'll move to a vote. Motion is to approve Resolution 2025-12, opposing legislation limiting or prohibiting Montana Association of Counties lobbying on behalf of its members, as presented by Mr. Balts. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes two to zero. We've arrived in that point in our deliberations where we open the Florida questions from members of the community on any matter or comments about any public matter within the jurisdiction of the county commission, but that's not on today's agenda. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? There being none, we're adjourned.